Excited for that. Oh, we're live now. Perfect. Great. In the spirit of respect, authenticity, and reconciliation, the Town of Slave Lake honors and acknowledges that we are situated on the traditional lands of Sarwich First Nation within Treatyate Territory, home to Indigenous Métis and Inuit peoples who have occupied these lands since time immemorial. Counselor Gramm.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Called a question, those in favor, and that is carried. Counselor Choba?
Motion to adopt the minutes from the committee of the whole August 12, 2020.
Okay, motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Called a question, those in favor, and that one is carried too. Perfect. Now that we've ran through that, our Arts Council delegation can take the floor. If we can get the mic on there. It's not on just yet, I think. Oh, there we go. Lights on. You're good to go. Floor is yours.
Okay, for those that don't know me, my name is Connie Baird. I'm representing the Lesser Slave Lake Regional Arts Council once again. What I am here for this evening is to present an idea, and we're hoping to get your permission and support for a new project that we'd like to to take the initiative on, and that would be to add some beauty to our garbage receptacles around town. We're hoping to, we have our Arts in the Park September the 14th in Sherter Park, and we'd like to kick off this project during the Arts in the Park by having a little art contest whereby we have people, I don't know whether we want to say, people sort of offer to paint these mini murals on our receptacles. So there are nine of them in Sherter Park as of now. I believe it was nine. And I'm not sure that we'll, yeah, six, sorry, there's eight. So we have six doubles and two singles in Sherter Park. Not sure that we'll get all of the eight of those done in a day, and it depends on the participation that we get or the reception that we get for this idea. So our idea is to have a little contest whereby people enter. They can put these little mini murals on the, oh, thank you, mini murals on the receptacles, and we'll vote on them, and there'll be prize money for them, first and second prize. Then, if that's successful on Sunday, September 14th, we would like to carry that through in the coming years to do the receptacles along Main Street, so that adds a little bit of interest and beauty to Main Street along with the larger murals that we've been doing. There's a couple of communities that we've sort of did some research on. Calgary has a few of them. A lot of them are doing the wraps, the cling wraps, but there are others. St. Albert does the, has them painted on. The mini murals are painted on their garbage cans. However, they're not the permanent ones that we need here in Slave because of the wild life, but there's the smaller, you can see in the picture there, the oil drums. So I guess our main thing is, is that we would like permission to do this from council, from the Town of Slave Lake, as well as if there's any chance that we could get some monetary support to bring this project to life. That would be awesome. I think I've covered.
Perfect. So what we'll do is we'll just, if you're okay with that, just open up the Florida Council for some questions.
Yep.
Counselor Gramm.
I think this is super cool, Connie. So I appreciate all the work you guys do with the murals, and this one is not a ton of money either. So and it's a really unique and cool project. Did you guys probably didn't fill out a request for funding yet for it?
We haven't.
So that we, the process changed slightly. I'll just jump in there. So there's the grant process change that used to come present, ask for funding. Now we have two streams for grant processing. One is for events for various groups, and the other is arts funding. So the Arts Council can apply, and then it goes through the process there as we allocate funds through that council, allocate funds through that during budget.
Okay.
So that's on the funding piece. So would that be able to apply on that if the, you know, if it meets the criteria? But as far as the permission, I think that's absolutely something that we could discuss at this table.
And this would be done next spring or summer, right? Like?
We would like to initiate the program on September 14th during our Arts in the Park to get those ones painted.
The eight that you're talking about, the six singles and the eight doubles?
Correct. The six, six doubles, two singles, two singles on September 14th, if we could. That's when we, because everybody is in the park, and we thought it would be a really good kickoff for that.
Well, just kind of a follow-up question on that then. So the monetary support that you're maybe seeking specifically, is that for the event on the 14th specific or just in general?
It's, yeah, we've already applied for the event grant, which, thank you very much for making those available, and we did receive that. So that was awesome. We also applied for the arts grant, and that's helping with the murals this year. This is something sort of over and above that, that we hadn't really planned on because it's a project that we've just come up with this idea. So we're wondering if there's any sort of monetary support that could be given because of the money that we have received has been allocated to the Arts in the Park and to the murals that we have going already.
Okay, got it. Okay. I don't know if we need to look into particulars about that.
Well, that would, so Counselor Gramm.
They, I don't remember, and Roland, our money guru isn't here, but the grant funding was like, if I remember correctly, someone could maybe pull it, but it was like, you're saying each group once a year could apply on it. So there's like double dipping. So that might be null and void, but maybe there's some money in parks or something that we can borrow from. We'll have to, that probably Roland's back. Just, I know that everything would likely be done appropriate. I just wondered, would there be a theme? So everything stays on cue or a color scheme, just more out of curiosity?
Yeah, we hadn't really gotten that far yet, Sean. Certainly, if there's some directive that you would like to see, you know, we can follow that. But our first priority was to see if this is even possible. And then perhaps I'm thinking just off the top of my head, Sherter Park, maybe there should be a kid's theme of some sort or play, you know, that sort of idea. I didn't.
Right.
But yeah, no, we haven't got that far.
Okay, cool. I'll, I'll make a motion at the end to figure out how to get you money, but I'll, there's probably more questions from everyone else.
Anyone?
Counselor Hughes. So, so long-term outside of Sherter in the Park, which I fully support. I think this is a great project as I love all of your projects, actually. And I like this one just because you're really engaging with the community more as well in the contest and, and everything. So I love that spin with it. Outside of Sherter Park, though, you would like to, you said, go down Main Street. So this could be a multi-year project, right? I just want to make sure I understand that correctly. Okay, perfect. Yeah. Yeah, I like that idea. I like the idea of the park specifically and kind of kids spaces. And, and I think just some of the ones that kind of stand out a little bit more like a sore thumb, right? I think having murals on some of those kinds of pieces down Main Street would be nice and just adds a little bit of unique flavor to our community. So.
I think one of the, one of the things that we're sort of gearing towards is at some point in time, having sort of an art walk that visitors coming into town can do so that, you know, they've got different spots that they can visit. So they would visit Sherter Park and look at the receptacles and then take a stroll down Main Street, that sort of thing, and look at the larger murals as well as the mini murals and.
I like that idea a lot. That's great. Yeah, this is, I think it's wonderful. You guys have my full support for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council on this? Okay, so what will, we're gonna, I'm gonna say we're going right into business arising from delegations. So we'll continue. If you want to sit there, though, just in case there's a question, that's fine, but we're gonna do the debate portion of that. But if you want to do a motion to.
I'll just sit here and, you know, if there's any questions, yeah.
Make a motion to accept the reporter's information.
Any further discussion? Called a question, those in favor, and that is carried. And Counselor Gramm.
I was gonna make a motion along the lines of task, tasking administration to bring back a report on the funding model and what's left in parks and so on and so forth. But I feel like probably a waste of time because I think this is pretty cool and I think we all support it. So I'm gonna make a motion to, to, I guess, give the Arts Council $2,000 in funding for this project from unrestricted surplus, because I think we're gonna end up giving them money regardless unless anyone has any obligations. But that's my motion.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. So I'm gonna go, any further discussion? Counselor Adams?
I think the reason for putting the procedure in is to avoid this situation. So putting, taking money from unrestricted surplus, I think, isn't what was intended when we created that other bylaw and process. That being said, I'm totally in favor of doing something like this, but I would like it. Parks, I don't think we have any money left, to be honest, because we don't have photography anymore.
Let's put a pin in this for a second. Ashley, hold on, she might have some comments on the money.
Sorry, Counselor Gramm, can you just reiterate the dollar amount for the record?
$2,000.
Okay, thank you.
Just otherwise, we get cut off track. Sorry to cut you off, Steve. Continue.
So I like the idea of it, and I like where we're going with it. If you've already got funding for the park already with your grant application, correct? So it's just about going around the rest. That should be brought forward on budget, and then we can maybe modify the budget during.
They don't have funding for the, they have the Art in the Park event, but not the receptacle.
And you also had the other grant.
Which is for the murals.
The murals themselves.
Yes.
The, I, the budget would be ideal except for it's for this September. Oh, sorry, my mic's not on. I talk loud anyway. Internet probably, the, the budget would obviously be ideal, but it, it's for this September, not, that's why I asked if it would be spring or something, but they need the money for next month.
Counselor Hughes.
Um, I understand where both of you are coming from. I do agree with Counselor Adams just in terms of we set a policy and procedure in place for this specific reason. I wonder if the smart move here may be to make a motion to have administration look into the situation and come back with a recommendation at our first meeting in September, in which we can decide the best route forward to make a donation for this specific project, just so we're not going against our own policy.
That was my original idea, except for they're not going to be eligible for it because they already received it. And I think my reason for being part of putting that in was so everyone wasn't coming asking for money. It wasn't, it wasn't to, to do it that way. It was just so like, we didn't have 48 groups coming. It was just going to go to administration. They'd put it out during budget, but this kind of supersedes that because regardless, it's going to go against that anyway because it would be done at budget, not now.
So I will pop in on like a procedure thing. So yes, we did change the grants around. That's 100%. And yes, the normal product process is through budget, where we would decide to either increase grant amounts, keep them the same, and we had policies and procedures surrounding that. Now, this was, this has been debated on and off across the four years, and this is how we finally got there, because there were certain grant amounts that were assumed. Also, it was very, we put certain things like the, the lighting policy in place and things like that so that it stops, you know, 20 groups coming in and, and you want to give everyone funds. So I do understand that. What we did say with that policy, which is the reason I like it, but nothing's 100%, is that if there was something outside of that, that administration felt was important, that that group would be allowed to present at council. So I believe this to be one of those scenarios that is outside of those grant applications, as I'm the one that approved the agenda, to allow a delegation to come and present outside of that because that's not prohibited in the bylaw and is obviously at council's discretion. So administration does receive all the applications and does receive all the delegation forms, and then weeds out what they feel, you know, if someone's applying for five events and it's the same group every year, like the same group in a year applying for five different events, well, the other four events likely won't reach their table, our table, unless something is, you know, extraordinary. So I believe, just as my own side opinion on this, that this is outside that policy, and this is why, you know, we have that delegation here today. So that's my two cents. Is there anything else from council on this? Counselor Adams? Oh, sorry, Counselor Hughes, sorry.
That's okay. So I just want to say, so to be clear, I, I like your distinction here that this is outside the policy. That clears it up for me a little bit more. To be clear, then you're in favor of $2,000 from unrestricted, like as per Counselor Gramm's motion?
I would like to see it. I'm, I'm okay with unrestricted. What I would ask, like, I would approve it at that. So this can get moving and get started because I have a feeling like this takes a bit of time. And then I would like to see, you know, I would suggest that administration take a look at what's left in the arts grant, and if it hasn't been fully used, and if it hasn't been fully used, then.
Yeah.
I, I, we could.
That's kind of what I was alluding to with my, let's wait and, but, but I agree.
I don't, I don't think we have time to wait. And I think if we wait till the first meeting in September, or at least to make this decision, if we wait till the first meeting in September, it's 12 days away from that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Counselor Adams first, then Counselor Gramm.
All right, couple of things. First, the application for this has come forward and was just asking for permission to do the work. Where does it say for funding?
It says in the letter, if you go to the LSLRAC 2025 garbage can project.
That wasn't in the delegation request.
But it's down below it in the letter that's submitted in the agenda.
So the $2,000 is what you need to make this happen, or that's just part of what you need to make this happen?
It's part of what we would need.
What's your overall budget that you're putting towards?
For this year, well, we'll need prize money. Like, this is probably going to cover our supplies. And then prize money over and above that would be coming out of the Arts Council budget this year. Okay, so next year, we're hoping that when we apply for the arts grant again, we'll have this built into that as well, which means we're going to have to be looking for more mirror money.
So my question revolves around by going against our policy that we just put in place. How is this outside of that ask? Counselor, or?
Hi. So I believe it's outside of this ask, just because when we discuss this at length, because policy, obviously, there's policies and procedures, but we always reserve the right as council to review that if the project we deem as important. Normally, for a grant application has to be in months in advance. I understand this has come up last minute because I obviously spoke to you, like personally, we spoke about the art competition that was held during Riverboat Days. So this has come up last minute, and I believe to be a unique, I personally believe to be a unique situation. I think the investment is low to kick it off. And like you said, your application next year, you know, you're, you're looking at foregoing an application for murals to move forward with, with garbage cans. I think small towns like ours, we're not going to see brand new buildings every, you know, we're not going to have all the buildings brand new every year. We're not going to have the newest, latest, and greatest every year. That's, you know, small town in real life. And I think if we can bring a bit of art to our, to our community and our, to our garbage receptacle, receptacles and our very long winters, I'm personally in favor of that, but that reflects kind of, kind of what I believe. So I do believe as council that we do reserve the right to review applications that are above and beyond that. And that's why I think, why? Anyone for Counselor Gramm?
I just got a comment on looking in the arts funding. We're, we're not getting a ton of applications for arts grants regardless. So theoretically, whatever's in there is going to get kicked into unrestricted surplus and right back to there at the end of it. And like, if it is from the arts thing, I'm 99% sure they don't qualify it because they've already applied on it. So like, we, we can't take it from there. So it's irrelevant.
And that's why she said next year.
That's why I'm saying for this one, like checking on administration to look into it. It doesn't matter if there's a million dollars in there, they don't qualify for it.
I was mostly just looking at what the budget was, curiosity of how much was left.
And the reason, like, the 2,000 mark just covers costs, and I feel like they're beautifying our, our stuff so we could cover the cost of it, right? Whether it's out of parks or unrestricted surplus, we're not doing prize money. We're not doing any of that. We're just trying to cover their costs to make our stuff look nicer. And I think we've talked about this. I don't know if it was during budget or at end. It'd be cool if the Arts Council, like, asked to do crosswalks or other things, right? Because like, murals are expensive and we're running out of wall space. So we didn't even ask them to do this, and they came up with it. So this is right up my alley. So that's kind of why I'm all for it.
Counselor Adams?
I'm not saying I'm against this. I love this idea. This, this is fantastic. My problem is, when we set a policy and procedure, you're supposed to follow it. Now, you're saying they can't go back and ask again, but again, that was an arbitrary policy we set up. So why can't we change that then? The, these rules that we're putting in place and then deciding three months later that we're not going to follow them seems kind of foolish. The, the, the whole point of a policy and procedure is to let a set of rules that you follow and process through that everybody understands. Because how many people didn't come before council to request funding because they followed the policy and the procedure, which was not to come before council? And now we're going to go around that. Now, as far as the funding for something like this, the $2,000, I think that's great to kick this off. Whether or not we have the money somewhere, which I'm sure we do in unrestricted, but again, the unrestricted is not meant to be there. It's our private little slush fund to fund whatever happens to come up during the year. It's supposed to be meant for emergencies and doing whatever. So I get, and I know I say this a lot, but I get frustrated with this last minute stuff that we do and not having it planned out far enough in advance that we can do the proper budgeting and the proper process that enables these kind of things to happen. So I, I am in favor of doing the permission to do it all. I have a hard time with the funding outside of the process. I'd rather see it go through the process.
Counselor Gramm.
I, I feel like it did go through the process because there, the mayor approves the budget. Obviously, she mentioned, you guys spoke at some point, or agenda, excuse me, the mayor approves the budget. Well, the mayor fixed our budget, but approves the agenda. So I, and I, I, I'm assuming that you thought this is why it fit in here and not to go the other route. So I, so.
As explained.
I'm assuming that. So anyway, but yeah, I think that it, it did go through where it was going, and you probably told her to come as a delegation, and I don't know that you could.
We, this project, when I, my point about speaking in July, just to cut in there, was that this hadn't come up yet to explain that this was a, they're trying to make this project fit within their schedule. So like, it's a last minute thing, and I understand it's last minute. So that's, that's why this, as of July, this wasn't a thing. So this is a new thing. So sorry, continue.
Yeah, no, so I was just going to Counselor Adams, where I think it fits within the realm of it's outside the scope, but it's not like a, outside the scope because of planning issues, or it's their 80th time coming. It's, this fits into the scope because they, they came and asked for this. So I, I think it fits perfectly.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion from council at this time? Counselor Adams?
Can you just reread the motion, please?
Ah, made a motion to give the Arts Council $2,000 for the, this project from unrestricted surplus.
From there, there can be a motion regarding approval. That would be another motion that would be needed to make. So this is just on the funding right now. So any further discussion on the funding? Okay, called a question, those in favor, all those opposed. All right, and that is carried. So now someone can make a motion regarding approval. Counselor Adams?
Still used to going over there.
I know.
Ah, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but I would make a motion to approve the painting of the garbage cans and the four by eight.
In Sherter Park. So this one, I think what would be prudent is to give permission to Sherter Park first. Let's see how it goes, and then approve down, approve down Main Street after.
Well.
Yeah.
But that would come for next year.
Yes. Yeah. So we're talking about the garbage cans at Sherter Park and the dive onboard as, as in here. Okay. All right. Motion on the floor for that. Any further discussion? Called a question, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so we can move along into our new business and reports. We have Kennedy, if you want to come up. We have our 2025 Community Programming Information Report.
Hi.
Hey there. Yep, floor is yours. And then, do you want us to wait for questions at the end, or do you want us to go through? What's your?
I'm talking about a number of different things. So if you want to ask a question about the thing that we're on, then I'm fine with that.
Perfect. So we'll just check, counselors, we'll just check through each kind of section. If you have questions at that section, let's go through them because it'll probably be a smoother process. Floor is yours?
Thank you. For those of you who may have not formally met me before, my name is Kennedy Hartman. I am the program coordinator for the town, and I'm here to talk about all of the programs that we have run through 2025. So the first one on the list is Frost Fest. I think Frost Fest was a huge success. It is a 10-day-long series of events intended to make the long winter months in Northern Alberta a little bit more enjoyable. Organize organizations within Slave Lake put on a variety of events to promote the benefits of active living during the winter months and improve community spirit. The Town of Slave Lake personally hosts two annual events that have been going on for a number of years, that being the Family Carnival and Frolic in the Park. I also implemented two new large events into the Frost Fest calendar this year, that being the Frost Fest Feast and Brushes and Bubbly. So the Family Carnival was held on February 8th. That was the first day Frost Fest started. So to kind of kick it off, we held a carnival at the MRC Field House. We rented eight inflatables and had a single roving performer at the field house for, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And we also had the young dancers from Dancing Kids do their performances for the crowd. We also had two staff doing face painting for the duration of the carnival. We charged a $2 entry and saw over 450 attendees through the three hours. The second event we held for Frost Fest was Brushes and Bubbly. This is the new one. It was a Valentine's Day Paint Night held on February 14th, Valentine's Day. We held it at the multipurpose room in the MRC. We offered free onsite childcare for participants with our casual program and activity leaders that we usually have run PD Day camps, but no one actually signed up for that. So we didn't end up utilizing that portion of the event, but we did have a number of participants sign up to do the paint night. We had these canvases with pre-drawn pictures on them that you could paint. So any skill level was welcome to enjoy. And we had a charcuterie spread and a bar open. And then the next event we did was the Frost Fest Feast. This is the other new one we did. It was a partnership with the Rotary Club of Slave Lake. The idea was to give attendees of the new sled drags event a reason to stick around town and enjoy the other festivities. So we held chili dinner at the Legacy Center, and we also hired a two-piece live karaoke duo, and it was really fun. We had 20 single tickets and four family tickets sold. And the Elks Bar was open and available, and we designed a signature drink at the event. The last event we held is the one to kind of close off Frost Fest, always held on the Family Day Monday, which this year was February 17th. Fortunately, we were in our cold spread in through February. It was about minus 50 that day. So we postponed until the May long weekend, May 19th, to be specific. And we had the Trackless Train doing rides around Sherter Park through the whole three hours that we were there. We had hot, free hot chocolate sponsored by Tim Hortons. And normally, we have fire pits and firewoods donated by Traveling Timbers, but unfortunately, because we postponed to the spring, we had a fire ban. So that portion of the event was not able to run, but we did still run Toy Mountain, and we had a lot of, the weather was great, and we had a lot of people sticking around to play on the playground and enjoy the park. And that is it for Frost Fest.
Okay. Counselor Hughes?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that I think Frost Fest is always great, and I love the past couple of years seeing some of these smaller events kind of join it. And I feel like we're really building on it really nicely, which I'm very happy to see. I think Frolic in the Park is always a hit, and even if it's postponed, people still come out to the park, and I feel like we always see really good attendance. I really love the addition of the Family Carnival, though, for an inside one, just because it never gets canceled. It just seems like it's always a win, and I feel like we have really good attendance already for it being like a newer event. So I'd like to see us grow and kind of continue with that as well. But just overall job well done on keeping some, putting some new things together and kind of keeping it fresh and, and growing the event as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is next up is Community Cleanup. We held our annual Community Cleanup Week from May 5th to 9th. We had 12 groups sign up via the MRC front desk, and we handed out over 225. Front desk, and we handed out over two hundred and twenty-five garbage recycle bags and gloves. We usually provide a dumpster along the side of MRC, so people have a place to. Put their bags if they choose to collect a lot of garbage they aren't able to dispose of themselves. And then we also offer the ability to have large items picked up by town facilities staff if needed. And now on to Summer Splash. This year, we had nine weeks of programming. Elise Statham joined us again as our camp coordinator. For her second year, she's done a wonderful job planning, organizing, and supervising Summer Splash. She's collected a large amount of sponsorship to cover the expenses of our field trips, which we've done a few extra new ones this year. We had three staff return from previous years and three newly hired. Total registration for Summer Splash is sitting at about eighty-five percent, two percent increase from last year. And we had a total of. Or the increase on the waitlist was nine hundred and forty percent. We had a large amount of interest on the the really fun days this year. I just want to give a brief overview of all the themes and activities we had planned for each week. Week one was Pirates Week. The main activities of these week included a treasure hunt, a trip to Devonshire Beach. A visit to the Hill to Even Splash Pad and Carboard Boat Races at the pool. We had a total of a hundred and thirty-four kids attend and two kids on the waitlist. Week two was Mad Scientists Week. The main activities of this week included a day of space-themed games. Learned how to make catapults, chemistry experiments, and a trip to the Telesworld of Science and a science-themed movie. We had a hundred and ninety-nine kids attend this week, and twelve kids were on the waitlist. Week three was Culture Week. This week, we had an Egyptian-themed day of activities, Hawaiian Shirt Day, and we went to the pool. Mexican Day with a Latin dance lesson and Scottish Day at the golf course. And we also did Peru Day with a variety of games and activities. We had a total of a hundred and ninety-four kids attend this week and twelve kids on the waitlist. Week four was Water Week. The main activities of this week included the Hill to Even Splash Pad, a trip to the Big Fish Bay Pool, swimming at the NLAC Pool. Sherter Park Splash Pad and a trip to White Courts Festival Park. We had five kids on the waitlist and a total of a hundred and eighty-seven kids enrolled this week. Weeks. That was week four. And then week five is Nature Week. The main activities of this week included a day at Sherter Park, a trip to Martin River Campground with programming provided by the Boreal Centre. An airplane tour with Alberta Wildfire, fishing and archery with the Slave Lake Rod and Gun Club, and swimming at the pool. We had a hundred and seventy-seven kids enrolled this week and ten kids on the waitlist. Week six was Sports Week. This week's activities included frisbee games and biking. Hockey skating, hockey and skating at the MRC, silks and dancing at Dancing Kids, and the Chatty Shack. Unfortunately, that day was postponed due to the weather. We had to walk to those places throughout the whole day, and it was pouring rain the whole day. But the next day, we did a soccer tournament, and the kids loved that. We had a total of a hundred and twenty-eight kids attend that day, and no one waitlisted. Week seven was Art Week, Arts Week. That was last week. This week will include mu- music lessons, cookie decorating, a planned craft with the Slave Lake Regional Arts Council. Drama lessons, and they performed a small skit at the Legacy Centre, and the parents were able to attend. And then they went to a movie at Rex Theatre. We had a total of hundred and sixty-three kids enrolled for the week, and no one waitlisted. This week is Super Spies Week. This included a secret mission activity last week. I want to say thank you to all the businesses that participated. They went around town and visited a few businesses, and they participated in the little. Storyline that we had created for them, and it went really well. Today, we did ninja training with Ula. Tomorrow, we'll do water gun target practice, a forensic themed day, and then on Friday, we're doing a trip to Spruce Point Park to play mini golf. And utilize their park and beach access. We have a total of a hundred and eighty-five kids enrolled for the week at this time and five kids on the waitlist. Next week is our final week of Summer Splash. And this week will include Hill to Even Splash Pad, programming with the Friendship Centre, a trip to Gibbons Jurassic Forest. Pizza making and swimming at the pool. We have a hundred and seventy-three kids enrolled at this time and six waitlisted. As a little side note to Summer Splash, we also run a program called Leaders in Training, or LIT. This is a volunteer program where we accept kids age twelve to fifteen to participate in one week of programming with Summer Splash. They act as assistant leaders to our staff leaders at day camp. And just really act as like role models for the kid on how proper camp behavior looks like. Throughout the summer, we have had eighteen volunteers, which is full. We usually like to take about two a week. They assist with the day-to-day tasks and activities of Summer Splash. This year, we added an open house for registration to give the opportunity for Elise and I to sit down and. Speak with both the parents or guardians and the participant to kind of like outline the expectations. And what the program is, and we've noticed a huge improvement in performance from the participants because they know what they're getting into beforehand. And they know the expectations, and they're outlined very well. So I think we will continue to do the open house registration. They also participate in similar training to our staff at the very beginning of the summer. And Elise and I give them a. A brief performance evaluation, and then they receive a certificate of completion if they make it through the whole week. And that can go on their resume, and they can use utilize it as work experience before they're of age to get a job. Okay, now.
Sorry, I are you done with the Summer Splash? I just had a question for you. So I'm just curious, and I don't know if you'll have this number in front of you or not, but did you see an increase this year in the overall numbers daily? Or or weekly, I should say, I guess?
I didn't do the weekly math, but I did the total summer math, and we were increased by two percent.
Okay.
I think weekly will reflect higher numbers. We also increased the waitlist numbers by nine hundred and forty percent. There was like five kids on the waitlist last year, and.
Okay.
I listed to you, like, there's kids on a new, like, a number of kids on the waitlist almost every week.
So what do you attribute that to this year, then? You added in more staff, or what's the reason why you were able to accept more?
I did add one more part-time staff this year as opposed to last year. We didn't change the numbers of. Enrollment that we take.
Okay.
The additional staff member was due to the location change to the curling rink. We no longer had the facility staff there to clean up every day. So we attribute that to needing extra hands to stay after hours without going into overtime to clean up our area each day and. Just pay respect to the facility that we're renting. But I do think it's the increase in attendance is attributed to the. More interesting and interactive programming that we're offering this year and. Themes and ideas.
Yeah.
That Elise and I have worked together on, and I also think. Just the advertising. I've noticed I've changed the way I've been advertising slightly, and I've noticed a higher interest in and like reaching other people that. Like, we had a lot of new kids, new registrations in a lot of our programs recently since I made that change.
Okay, that's great. I was actually going to commend you guys on that. I love the themed weeks. I love that you're traveling with them a little bit more and just that you're using, you know, and visiting other assets in the region as well. I think that's great that you guys are doing that. And yeah, it's been really good to see. So please keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Hey, continue.
Okay, on to Canada Day. To celebrate Canada Day this year, we held our event at the MRC, including the Canada Car Carnival. A Dunk Tank, a Free Pancake Breakfast, and Food Trucks in the Parking Lot. The Canada Day Carnival was made up of eight inflatables, a trio of performers for roving, and they also did two thirty-minute performances throughout the day. We had face painting and glitter tattoos onsite as well. This year, we did a little bit or something a little bit different with the carnival. We added a. Sensory-friendly hour for the first hour of the carnival for individuals with neurodivergent. Conditions or sensory issues. And it was utilized by a number of attendees, and I thought it was amazing. And then it got much busier at eleven once the sensory hour was over. The idea behind that was to give them a quieter, less crowded, more comfortable and safe space for them to still enjoy the events. And I think I'll continue doing that for future events because it did seem to be a success, and I did receive lots of positive feedback. The carnival was then open from for general admission from eleven AM to three PM. The Pancake Breakfast was also a huge success. We had a ton of attendees lined up through the whole parking lot for the full hour was open and even a little bit after that. Huge thanks to the Fire Department for cooking for us. That was one thing I didn't have to worry about on a busy day. They were a huge help. And then Susan's Kitchen Concession was open. They also had their ice cream trucks stationed out front. And they went through all the the whole process of sponsoring free ice cream for everyone for the whole day. And they saw about twelve, they served twelve hundred scoops of ice cream that day. It was amazing. And we also had Nacho Daddy's Food Truck onsite from eleven AM to three PM, and they were a huge hit as well. I would say we saw about fifteen hundred visitors throughout the whole day, visiting all of the activities. The Dunk Tank. Paid for itself two times over, and we received the Celebrate Canada Grant for two thousand four hundred and twenty dollars this year. And we also received a small amount of sponsorship as well. Playground Program is another program that we run throughout the summer. It's a drop-in program. That we hold at Hill to Even on Tuesdays and Thursdays in Sherter Park on Wednesdays. The recent addition of Sherter Park this year has not been as successful as we had hoped. They see a significantly lower number of attendance at Sherter Park, and it's usually the same kids. They just come across town. So based on that feedback from the staff, I think we'll stick at Hill to Even for next year. But we have two staff to facilitate the program. One is returning for her third year, and she's done amazing this year. We see an average of seven kids per day. It's also weather dependent. When it's warmer, we'll have up to twenty, twenty-five kids. And then on the lower days, it just brings the average down a little bit. And the staff feedback suggests that Sherter Park is significantly lower in attendance than Hill to Even. Yeah, that's it. Wanted to note some of the other programs I ran throughout the winter and the fall. Go Girls ran three sessions since last fall, and we have an average of nine attending per session. We also hold youth events once a month, and the average attendance is six per event. Fundamental Skills is a toddler, a parent, parented class for toddlers. We see an average attendance of six per session. We ran two of those in the winter. We also held our first pickleball tournament back in July, and we had eight teams registered, and it went really well. I also had to, we had to cancel the basketball three-on-three that was sponsored by Moray Group, unfortunately, due to lack of registration. And we also hold Glow Skates every other month. We see an average of fifty-eight skaters per skate. We do Paint and Sips approximately every other month, and we, the average attendance of that is fifteen per class. We also do a seniors fitness class that Ula runs called Ball Prevention. They. Come to the track twice a week, and the average attendance is about eighteen per class. We also ran three sessions of Stroller Fit, which is a mom's class run by Ula as well. Average attendance is ten per session, which is full. It's been full every time. We ran one pickleball clinic in the spring. We had fourteen registered, and we're planning to run that again. We had a lot of interest in continuing and increasing the difficulty. We run PD Day camps on every PD Day Friday, and we have an average attendance of twenty per day. We also do a Fall Break Camp. This was the first year we did that, and then Spring Break Camp as well. Registered Pickleball is once a week, and the average attendance is thirty per session, which is full, and we also take ten drop-ins on top of that for those who can't make it every day. Ballin was an exercise class run by Ula utilizing exercise balls. The average attendance for that was six per class. The, we're planning to run that again with slightly modified times and dates for that this fall. And then we did Walk Your Way to Fitness run by Donna Melvin, but unfortunately, she moved away this spring. So that class will be discontinued, but in the past, we ran two sessions and the average attendance was ten per session. And then we did run a spin class back in the fall. The average attendance was five per class, which is full. But unfortunately, the instructor that we utilize now does the Hydro Riders at the pool. So we didn't want to overload her. And then we also offer a new program called Playzone. Just every Saturday morning, we get it sponsored, so attendance is free, and we have one staff member working to kind of. Encourage the kids to play. They can run games, or they can teach the kids how to play with all of the equipment and toys we have set out. The average attendance for that is twenty-seven per day.
Questions for council? I'll say that I just really appreciate the update of all of our programming. We, obviously, we know that community service has a very broad scope. So I love to see all the programs that are offered and the detail, and I think we're. We're covering more of a population demographic of the town than that we have previously. I think we've got something. Just about for every age group, and and we're trying to capture kind of every phase of life in here. So I really appreciate the the diversity of the programs offered. A great report.
Thank you.
Right, Counselor Craplin.
I will make a motion to accept the report as information.
Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Called a question those in favor. Thank you. Okay, next up, Josh, for Municipal Policing Committee Bylaw.
Thank you.
Josh and Kush, sorry. Only one name on here.
Keep your weapon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This. The purpose of this Municipal Policing Committee Bylaw is to. To establish a, well, as it is says, to establish a policing committee within in the Town of Slave Lake. The province, the provincial government passed Bill Six, the Police Amendment Act in twenty twenty-two. And the PAA is intended to increase police transparency and enhance public trust. In addition to other reforms, less than requires the formation of civilian governments bodies for all municipalities in Alberta. So that communities can participate in setting policing priorities and performance goals. And these include several new mandated structures for municipal input into policing. And the province has recently released two supporting regulations to clarify the powers, duties, functions, and composition of these new governance bodies. Police Governance Regulation and Police Governance Ministerial Regulation. Every community in Alberta served by the RCMP will be required to be represented by one of the following types of governance bodies. Depending on size, composition, either a municipal policing committee, regional policing committee, or provincial police advisory board. Communities with populations over fifteen thousand that are policed by the RCMP. Will be required to establish a municipal policing committee. These committees work with elected officials and to set policing priorities. Goals and reports or and report on initiatives to support these goals and create safety plans. And with their local RCMP detachments and authorities and so forth. A municipal policing committee will consist of no fewer than three members, but not more than seven, appointed by the municipality's council. The municipality minister may also appoint a committee members based on the size committee. Now, regional policing committees are for those with less than that population threshold of fifteen thousand. And each RCP district, RCP district in the province, south, the central, the east, and the west. Is comprised of a region, and each region contains five or to ten municipalities. Within each district. The regional policing committees will represent the interests and concerns of the public to the RCMP leadership in their district with local officials. To identify and address public safety concerns for their region and report on the implementation of programs serviced to address them. And each regional policing committee shall have at least one representative appointed by each municipality. So it's, yeah, there is just slightly different structures between municipal and a regional one. Um, the provincial police advisory board, on the other hand, uh communities policed by the RCMP under the police, provincial police service agreement will be represented by provincial police advisory board. Uh, the board represent interests of concerns of burdens of the Albertans in these communities and support integrated safety planning and liaise with Alberta's government, the RSP and other municipalities. And this is a fifteen person boys, uh, for fifteen person board will be appointed by the Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Services and dedicated for the seat representative of rural municipalities and so on and so forth. And the municipalities will be responsible for the cost of establishing these uh committees and uh and uh the sustaining membership. In our case, the town administration was notified by provincial staff that every other municipality in Eastern Alberta in the, in the Eastern Alberta Regional Policing Committee, which the town of Slave Lake is a part uh, uh, was a part of is forming their own municipal policing committee. Uh, which uh, which uh, be uh, the, which has left uh the decision of these municipalities to form their own policing committees left the town of Slave Lake to, with no other option but to create its own municipal policing committee. Uh, it is therefore pertinent that council gives three readings to municipal policing by law number sixteen twenty twenty-five and direct administration to request a minister, ministerial approval to create a municipal policing committee in the town of Slave Lake. Uh, with options, one, uh, council gives all three readings to the municipal policing committee by law, number sixteen twenty twenty-five and directs administration to request a ministerial approval to create a municipal policing committee. Or option two, council gives first reading and bring back the bylaw at the September second regular meeting of council.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions from council? Counselor Grammick?
I don't even know if I have a question. Just some thoughts in my head here. So the feds tell us what we're gonna pay. We don't really have a choice. The province, to my understanding, is supposed to dictate what the RCMP does for Alberta. We don't really have a choice. But now we're being kind of told we should form this committee, whether we don't really have a choice and pay for it. Is this, I, I don't know what the, no one's gonna listen to us anyway, but I don't know what the point of the committee is other than wasting money. Is this something so the province could roll out a police force after we all say we're not happy with police services because no one's happy with anything? Or I'm just confused by this all and I get we're gonna read it all probably and say yes to it all tonight because we're supposed to, but I just wanted to discuss what what this is gonna do for us other than cost money and cause just more meetings and red tape. Go ahead.
Anyone want to weigh in on that before I do? Um, but again, personal opinion is going to factor heavily into that, but I will maybe refrain from some of that and more go from a town perspective. I understand that this is effectively something that we have to do. Um, we can obviously push second and third reading till September, but uh, we're basically left without any choice at this point, whereas we should be forming a regional board. So I appreciate the detail on the report. I understand it's you know, presenting the regional board when we're actually not, we're going to be going for the municipal board. Uh, I would echo the comments that uh, I think our relationship with the RCMP, we meet with them quarterly, if not more than that, uh, when issues arise and our staff sergeant always comes and presents the quarterly report as well as a variety of other meetings. Um, and then there's also, you know, citizens on patrol and other ways to stay involved with the detachment as well as kind of an open door policy for speaking. So I personally think these committees are ridiculous, but from a municipal perspective, uh, it's a waste of administration time and money. Uh, this is not your fault. This is just me speaking at the province, but you happen to be sitting here. Um, we have our counselor time for meetings. We have our administration time having to provide executive assistance. Not only is there agendas, approving agendas, in general, it's a waste of taxpayers' dollars. Now, I understand we're all gonna approve it here, but I, I share the same sentiment. Counselor Adams.
Uh, well, I've got a number of questions that all revolve around the same comments you're making is um by this rule coming in or this law, uh, and we're required to do this, does that then not supersede our ability to meet with them and set our own priorities? It has to go through this uh committee? Not how we're currently set up and, and the town's council is giving those priorities to the RCMP?
Alex, you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, so when administration met with the um governing body on this, some of the questions that, some of these similar questions were asked. Um, what they're, the, the big picture is council gives direction to the detachment commander. This is allowing the community members to have some say in some of that as well. I believe their, the detachment commander is going to take the direction from the council, from current council and from the committee and build that into their annual um, report. Some of the information is very vague, uh, so it's, it's hard to get some of the answers to some of the questions. We've, we've gone back and forth in emails and, and online videos um to, to try and establish as much of this information as we could. We're, we're probably about four months behind some of the other communities with the changes that we, we did and and trying to gather the proper information to make sure we could push forward with this. Um, some of the other communities are already starting their enhanced security checks for their community members and we do not even have a committee yet. So uh, it's, it's some of the communication is vague. We're trying to follow what we've been given as the direction. We don't have all the answers to some of those questions.
Well, my, the concern I have here is, one, if you got a direction from council going to the commander, how, and I, I know I'm gonna butcher the language here with what he's actually called, but uh what if they're opposed? Opposing views between the committee because really you only have one counselor on there. So that's one vote out of X number. Uh, between three and seven, I believe it is. Then uh, you've got direction from council that's directly opposite of what the committee's telling them. How is, how are we gonna be effective here? This, this is my concern and who supersedes who because someone's gotta have the, the hammer. For lack of a better term. Um, my other, we've got cost responsibilities being put on the town again, which shocker. It's being put down to us, but what are we expecting this to add to the budget overall or do we have an idea what that's gonna look like yet? Because, and I understand a lot of it is open-ended because the committee gets to set how many meetings in a year they have.
Exactly.
However, many, they get to determine their own budget for whatever it may be. Uh, now granted, I guess we have to approve that budget, but at the same time, it doesn't say that in the rules. They say they submit the budget to us and we're that's that. So do we actually have any say in budget?
No, we haven't. Probably when we come back with the appointment of the committee members, that's when probably we can provide that information to council.
And it does say in here, I'll just weigh in that it says the committees will work with elected officials to set policing priorities for the community. So the hope is that one doesn't supersede the other, but it's very murky. Um, as Counselor Adams identified, that it's not clear that if there's disagreements um or how, how that will be moderated and if council's priorities are different than the citizen appointments, because again, you never know what who will be listened to over whom, like if there is a, an order. Now, we do have a current situation where we have the MD and council and we both have priorities, but we generally work collaborati- and collaboratively and one isn't necessarily weighed out over the other. Uh, so I, I, there is a possibility for this to work, but it could be interesting. Counselor Grammick?
Sorry if I missed it in the report. I apologize because I was just like, I'm confused on some stuff, but like, is the MD now forming a committee?
Alex, you can weigh in.
So because of their numbers and their MD, they're part of the provincial committee of the fifteen members, so they be lumped into that entire group of First Nations and the smaller communities.
Yeah, but so that what happens is like we're, the policing costs, we, we're sharing policing costs. So I'm gonna get in a big rant about money. But like, they're getting our police service and we're footing the bill and that, that's great. We all have friends and family, but like now we have a committee, we're footing the bill like we, we don't have a bunch of money here to just keep paying for.
But al- but also not just, I, I'm confused right now because the way it works right now is um our staff sergeant and, and uh, and other detachment members meet with our council and they meet with the MD council to establish priorities. It is a regional police service. Obviously the police service services MD one twenty-four there. Um, and the priorities of both councils are obviously considered and it's collaborative and the MD pays albeit a less of a percentage due to population for this detachment. So the confusing part to me is I usually look at where the dollars flow. So our town is putting money towards the ta- detachment. That's twenty-five percent of our budget, if not more. And the MD is putting still a significantly large portion, but this committee, again, not you guys, but this committee now is only the town of Slave Lake and the MD is hopping on the provincial one. So I'm super confused how this committee reflects our current scenario. Do you follow my discrepancy in that when I'm looking at funding? Alex, you wanna weigh in?
So it was one of the questions, it was one of the questions we asked, um, when they, when they mentioned the regional, um, why we'd be lumped in with Lack Lacklebush and Cold Lake and communities that are considerably further away from us and not Big Lakes County and, and the MD and those types of, and it's because of the numbers, they picked the arbitrary number of fifteen thousand. Um, and so above that is their own, below that is supposed to be the regional, but they all opted into their own. And then the smaller number is the, the provincial, uh, that encapsulates the First Nations and all those other groups. So we're basically an island in the middle of everything else.
What I would like to ask, and maybe it's not possible, but following this, given that our detachment literally only serves MB one D, MB one twenty-four and the town of Slave Lake and currently we both meet with them and work together with them. Can we not, if we're asking to be outside of the fifteen thousand and do our own municipal one? Can't we A, talk to MD council and see if they wanna hop on and we both go together and the Sarge, like, can we not ask that?
So we, we fully expected to have some questions come out of this meeting that we're gonna take back to the contact that we have with this policing committee. And we can definitely ask that question.
So I, my, I, I would like it to be asked if we can band together with our existing detachment coverage, um, even though, which would make us actually over outside, over the fifteen thousand, but if we can work together on that, because to me, to take direction, you've got MD on the provincial one and our own town of, it makes no sense.
But the MD and the Sarge would be together on the provincial.
Even from the, the, I, maybe the grassroots idea in this is like, hey, which we're kind of trying to do is like tell your area what you need with the RCMP, right? Because everyone's different. So like, let's pretend we're getting behind that. It's making sense a little bit, but now there's just a fifteen person board for everybody else in the province. So someone in Southern Alberta is gonna have the same issues as someone there, like the premise of this doesn't make sense for anybody. I'm so confused. I, I wonder if we should have our, like, do one reading, bring it back for September second, try to get the RCMP here, reach out to Mike Ellis. Maybe he could come and provide answers of what the point of this is.
So when we originally received this, one of the specifications in there is not to reach out to your local RCMP, which I did. Um, it's supposed to be a standalone agency outside. They are invited to the meetings in a non-voting capacity, but it's supposed to be done without their assistance.
Counselor Adams.
There is a provision there to do a joint municipality piece. Now, whether or not you could actually convince the, the MD and say Sarge, for example, to be part of this local joint municipalities another saying, because I don't know how much they have to pay one way over the other and how that would work, but there is a possibility to do the joint piece.
But also like.
Ministerial approval.
Yes, but also how, how they are dividing this committee is also based on MPSA and PPSA. So you know how like smaller communities might be under PPSA and they have to fall under their provision, like provincial.
One for the Sarge, right?
Yeah.
That's why I was thinking it, it has to go to ministerial approval if you're wanting to do anything under.
We already have to go to a minister, minister to be on our island.
Yes, that's.
I know, I, this whole thing is, anyway.
Hypothetically, what if Minister Ellis doesn't approve us to be on?
We say no.
Like, I think we have to do it, but so we're getting approved anyway, but what if he just says no, just hypothetical, anybody?
We would be regional and there's no one in our region.
Can we also say no? Alex, wait, we're all over the place. Let me direct this.
We.
Can you please?
We were given the impression that it wasn't an option. Uh, let's, I'll leave it at that.
So I have, I have further questions about that. Uh, A, the, the idea that we're not given an option for a committee that we're under, not super thrilled with. I don't think that's a thing and I don't think actually the province can do that with powers of authority over the MGA. Pretty sure, don't quote me on that. I'd have to do some research, but I'm pretty sure that is stepping well outside of their lane. So whoever advised us of that, I would like clarification in writing from your contact. I'll get you in a second, Steve, and your contact, because I'm on a rant now.
Yeah.
Um, your contact at the, whoever this is for the policing committee regarding uh what section of the MGA that references that the province can force us to do this. Uh, next up, I would like to address how we can, and I'll make a motion on that. So if you could please, I would like to direct administration to contact your policing committee connection regarding several questions we have here. Um, and then my other question has to do with if this is already going to ministerial order because it's being forced, which I have a huge problem with at the moment. Um, and we maybe need to look at legal on that is how to involve the MD and Sarge so that this actually reflects our policing model. Counselor Adams, Grammick and then Hughes.
Well, it's, it's been listed under the act that this must happen. So it's an act. It's not like it's a, uh whatever the one below the act is, what is that? Not the regulation, but it's, it's in the act that this must be done. So I don't think we have a leg to stand on to say, oh, we don't have to.
So like, it's in the act. I guess they're gonna roll it out. I said we're probably gonna read this tonight, but how can we make, well, I know how we can do it, but like we're making, we're gonna give our own, we're gonna make up our own bylaw to fit within their stuff. What if we don't? Like, what if I, I'm not do, I'm saying no, I'm like tonight anyway, you could do it unanimously next time, but I, I don't get how the town of Slave Lake has to make a bylaw for it. If it's in their act, make it your act and we'll follow it. I don't have to make a bylaw at the town level to do it.
The act is that you're gonna do the bylaw and you're gonna have this set up for the municipal. The reason for the bylaw, in my understanding, is we're not a regional, right? And we're going municipal, so that's why we need the bylaw, because there's no one, no one to be regional with.
But there is.
But there isn't because the zones are set up very specific. We're in east. And they only listed, I don't know, how many are there? Five?
So they also go based on population as well, right? So we are in the same group of.
Five thousand to fifteen thousand, yeah.
I would venture to say this is probably a bigger picture of rejuggling areas and ridings and stuff than that's what, why they're listing us right now. Because it doesn't make sense. I don't like it.
Alex.
So if I may, um, offer a suggestion to make first reading and make a motion for the questions like answered for September second and we'll work on this as administration to try and answer some of those.
Counselor Hughes is next.
You have been waiting so long, you guys. Um, well, you guys kind of asked a few of my things now, but where was I going with that? I, I think I agree with that, I guess for today, just to summarize. I am not comfortable moving forward at this point. I have a lot of questions as well. Um, I am curious, has anyone in our administration followed up with Alberta municipalities? Because oftentimes these bills and these acts, right? If, if they're getting um resistance from municipalities, there are some things that come out that could be helpful. Is there resources or contact there as well that we could explore?
So some of the information in the report has came directly from Alberta municipalities website. It was posted on there, so.
Okay, so not really there, they've like, and, and we're just, are we just behind the game on this?
Yes.
Why, can I ask why we're behind the game?
So the original conversation started about late December, early January. Um, after the change was made with the um CAO, we were playing a bit of catch-up with the information that was provided at that time.
Okay.
So there was an email sent asking where we were and it was kind of out of the blue. So we had to play catch-up to figure out what was actually, the email was basically asking where we are with our committee, which we had, didn't have any clue about.
Okay.
So we had to spend the time, I brought in some of the other administration to sit with me to go and review that and, and sit through the presentations. They've been very good with us to extend timelines and allow us to have these conversations, but yes, we are behind.
Okay.
Some of the.
Just curious if like we weren't notified when everyone else was or what.
And we're not the only one behind. We're just one of the ones that's playing catch-up.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Grammick.
Maybe uh, maybe, maybe it's not crazy, although I don't understand it, but and even if it's not crazy, the funding really bites that we just have to dump out more money when we're really just trying to find money to paint garbage cans and such. But uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get uh Mayor Ward to reach out to Tyler Gandom, the president of AM and then I'm gonna reach out to the uh, I'll reach out to Nolan Dick. He's the parliamentary secretary for Indigenous policing and I'm sure he could he could give me a sales pitch on what this is and Tyler could give you their idea of what it is and then we'll get that info and we could share it with you guys for our next meeting. So at least we have an understanding of different ways this is coming from.
I, oh, so two seconds, I'm gonna lose this thought and then it's Counselor Adams. Um, I have a feeling the intention of, well, assuming everything's above board, I have a feeling the intention was to have citizen input in to their policing. However, I believe our community, because of jurisdictional boundaries and how they have structured this with the arbitrary fifteen thousand has essentially set us up on an island and we, it, it doesn't fit here. May fit in larger areas, but it, it's really not working here. Counselor Adams.
I, I just rather than going on this path, I think we pretty much solved that, but I do have some questions as as relates to the bylaw that you put forward. So why are you picking five members?
So the regulation clearly says population under twenty-five thousand need to have five members.
It said between three and seven.
So, but if you look. So, but if you look at the, I mean, there is a, like an actual, like regulation from the.
I got that.
And this, it is under seven A. So municipalities with a population of less than twenty-five may appoint up to five members to the committee. So that is where, and then Alberta municipalities website was saying between three and seven.
Yeah, one was for the twenty-five thousand mark, but if you're in between the five and fifteen, that's where it was saying three to seven.
But under the regulation.
I thought in regulation ministerial, right?
I'm just looking at a regular regulation, not ministerial regulation. So.
Okay. Uh, okay, that's fine. And then why two-year terms as opposed to three-year terms?
And again, that copy of the bylaw was provided by our provincial contact. And she's like, this is what other municipalities are starting with. So maybe this is what you can start with establishing for two years and then go from there. And we had this conversation at, uh, senior leadership level as well. Um, none of them had any concerns with that. So we're just presenting the bylaw.
Sorry, I'm going to keep going here. I got three more to go, then I'll shut up. Uh, the other thing in the bylaw I noticed that's in the, in the, uh, um, in the act, is it saying we're supposed to have a public complaint director appointment? But we don't have that within our bylaw. So we should have that list in the bylaw that somebody on that committee must be designated the public complaint director?
We can clarify with the provincial.
Yeah, please clarify that. Uh, and then the second one I came across was the, uh, yearly plan of priority development. It's not mentioned in the bylaw either, although it says we have to report to it. So I think in that bylaw, we got to state that this committee must create and put forward this yearly plan of priorities and the development thereof. However, we word that. And then my third and final one is just a minor one. Uh, it's more of a reference piece. We've got, um, the bylaw references section five point three uh, of the act, and I couldn't find in section five point three that deals with the with what you're referring to in there for the ministerial appointments. When, when I look it up, like in the police act five point three, I've got as the population exemptions and whatnot. And when I look in the, uh, M G A, I couldn't find it in there. And when I looked in regulations, the only one I could find was section seven that referred to it. So if you wouldn't mind just verifying uh, your reference to section five point three.
Sure.
And just make sure that that's right, because I could be totally wrong, but nonetheless, I couldn't find it.
Well.
And then I'm done.
So with all of your, uh, stuff, Counselor Adams, like, are you still comfortable giving first reading or are we going to table this whole shindig till next one? Cause I don't give a hoot either way now.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to see, I need, I think we need the bylaw revamped. So whether or not it's first reading and then come back with the changes and we do a second. But I thought my understanding is to go through all three have to be correct.
I think.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we can't.
Okay. So I don't think we move forward.
I get a motion to table it till the next meeting.
Sure. I'll make a motion to table this report and bylaw number sixteen, two zero, two five until, uh, the September second council meeting.
Fantastic. Any further discussion? I know we have lots on the issue, but for that, from the tabling at the moment, call the question was in favor. And that is carried. Thank you for your report. It's not on you. Sorry, our, um, internal municipal anger is being directed towards you because you're sitting here. It's not you. Apologies. You can share, you can share the wrath of council. Um, can we have a ten minute break, please? Thank you.
We are live. Okay, we're going to continue our meeting with our advance voting and joint election report. Ashley, if you would like to continue.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. So the purpose of this report is to schedule an advanced vote date to hold the 2025 general election in conjunction with High Prairie School Division and Living Water School Division Board Member Elections, so Board Four. Historically, the town of Slave Lake has scheduled events voting to allow residents optimal time for voting as well as hold general elections in conjunction with School Division Board Member Elections. The strategic alignment not only streamlines the voting process but also fosters increased voter turnout by allowing residents to cast their ballots for multiple important local offices at the same time. Additionally, the collaboration helps optimize administrative resources, reduce overall election costs, making the electoral process more efficient, sustainable for both the town and school divisions. Advanced voting as per the local authorities election act, section seventy-three, three, subject to subsections four and seven, a municipality having a population greater than five thousand must provide for must provide for holding an advanced vote date on the election of municipal councillors, including by-elections and the submission of a bylaw or question to electors under section seven. In the town of Slave Lake's case, our population is seven thousand one hundred and ten according to the Alberta Regional Dashboard's last update in two thousand twenty-four. Previously, in two thousand twenty-one, our population was recorded as six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six, both well above the population threshold for advanced voting. Joint elections as per the local authorities election act, section two, one, an elected authority made hold an election separate or in conduct in conjunction with another elected authority in the same area. Further section states, an elected authority made by resolution enter into agreement with one or more elected authorities in the same area for the conduct of an election. So discussion tonight, currently administration is requesting for the town of Slave Lake to to approve the advanced voting date and to allow administration to enter into agreements with the High Prairie School Division and Living Water School Division. For advance voting, the town of Slave Lake, returning officer myself, is suggesting to hold the advanced voting date on Saturday, October eighteenth from ten AM to four PM for the following reasons. As per the local authorities election act, no advance vote shall be held twenty-four hours of election day, so that would be the Sunday, October nineteenth. The Thanksgiving long weekend, October eleventh to the thirteenth, Monday. So this is when residents are usually traveling or getting together for holiday gatherings. And then the, myself, I'm away in training at the beginning of October. And to, on October sixth, just to add, that is when we are legislately required to start posting notice of election day. So that actually leads up to the next two weeks up to the election. So by legislation, that's when we'll start. But we, is posted on our website, but this is just more formal and paper. Saturdays historically tend to have the best turnout for advanced voting as it's not taking place during the work week. The joint elections, so the town of Slave Lake, returning officer myself, is recommending to hold the twenty twenty-five general election with both the High Prairie School Division and Living Water School Division Board Member Election as historically we've had, held both elections at the same time. This also helps to relieve pressure of the school boards to conduct their own elections as well as encourage voter turnout. So your options tonight are to authorize administration to hold the advanced vote date on October eighteenth, to authorize town Slave Lake administration to hold an advanced voting date on another date. So if you would like to go with this option, you can just task administration to bring back a different date. To authorize the town of Slave Lake administration to enter into agreements with High Prairie School Division and Living Water School Division, or to not authorize. Currently, there is no resource impact if we hold the elections in conjunction. And advanced poll dates would be posted on our website as well as in the newspaper, which is legislatively required. This relates to our mission because we'd be working together, building a better community, so helping the school divisions out. And so my recommendation to council is to hold the general election advance vote on October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, in the town of Slave Lake council chambers from ten to four PM, and to enter joint election agreements with both Living Waters and High Prairie School Division. Any questions?
Counselor Groundlock, first hand up.
Just a comment, I think Saturday is obviously a great idea, no later, if we're going to do it early. And originally, I would kind of have said, oh, it's a little bit close to that, so it's not that much of an advanced vote, but it fits within your schedule and you're the person who has to do it. So I think that works then, if that's what works for you and how it works for me. So yeah, just a few comments, the Saturday is great and ideally you'd want it a week or two in advance, but that does, that probably doesn't work best. So thank you. That sounds good to me, but I'll let everyone else weigh in and.
Any further comments from council? Counselor Adams.
I don't like it being that close. I have a problem with it being only days ahead. That's not really an advanced poll. If people are gone on the day of election, odds are they're gone two days before. The, putting it in the other days, okay. As far as a returning officer, you're required to be on site during election on advanced polls? You just do plan.
I can double check if my substitute could take place, but to be honest, as a returning officer, I would want to be there. I would not want to just hand that off. I take the election very seriously. An advanced vote, I understand what you're saying. You want it further in advance, but an advanced vote by definition is just before the election. White Court, Old, Town of Olds, they do hold it the day before. And to be fair, historically, town of Slave Lake, we have held it the Saturday before. We can add in another date if you would like. We, I'm definitely open to that. That would incur more costs, but I think we can definitely keep it under budget. So we can definitely look at those two things as well.
I'm not necessarily saying hold two advanced polls. I'm saying have an advanced poll that's further out than two days.
Well, and also too, we only, like I mentioned before, we really only start, like legislative wise, putting it in the local newspaper two weeks prior. So if we can move it to Thanksgiving, I think we would see a problem there. And historically, Slave Lake is the last minute town. We're thirty-two days away from election and we have one formal nominee filed. So I would say Slave Lake, historically, from my opinion, we are a little bit last minute.
And I do appreciate your opinion. You're allowed to voice your opinion to us whether or not we agree or disagree, but please.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, you definitely give us more information than not, and just know that if there is dissension here, it's opinion based, so we like that. Counselor Hughes.
Yeah, I appreciate to hear your feedback on it. I mean, just looking at my own calendar, I understand why you're making the recommendation that you're making. I would have loved to see it on Thanksgiving weekend personally, but I do, because it is a long weekend, I think that that will be a mistake. I think that we will have people sitting here and people will not be coming to do advanced polls. So given this situation, I think your recommendation of the eighteenth is the best that we have to work with at this point in time.
And it is because of the Thanksgiving long weekend, or I would have, I would have picked that weekend, but I was just thinking if I brought that to council, that could have been a problem, so.
I think people will be so full of turkey and family gatherings that, you know, we already have a low voter turnout, and I understand that's not election day. The only thing I could think of and we can discuss as council is if we wanted to add another advanced poll perhaps in an evening. That would be not on, like, we need a weekend date. I get that two days before, but if we did one.
Like a Friday night or something?
A Friday night, or I would maybe go like a Wednesday or Thursday night, open later, which would and maybe a week, like, and that would perhaps give us that avoid the, if you're gone for that weekend, then you'd miss the, that, that Saturday. So it would not provide an option. Anyway, Counselor Adams, you have a comment?
Just one more question along that. I know when we do the provincial, we go to, like, the senior centre, the hospital, things like that. Does that happen with municipal?
That's written in our bylaw, so we will be going into all the institutions.
Institutional voting.
Yeah, we will be conducting that during the work week, actually leading up to the eighteenth, so we will be going into the hospital and all of the senior centres.
Counselor Choba.
Yeah, I think I agree with you, Mayor Ward, that I think, we should have one other early voting or the week before on like a week evening or weeknight. I think that gives more of an option for individuals who would either work on the weekends and not be able to make it, and also gives more people, just more than one opportunity to cast their votes and that their voices be heard, so.
Counselor Groundlock and then Counselor Hughes.
I would say I'm adamantly opposed to adding an extra day just for funding, and I, I understand you might come under budget, but why not come even more under budget? Like, there's an advanced polling, this is a municipal election with statistically a low voter turnout. I, I don't want to make people come sit here to have eight people come vote on an extra night. Like, I, I, I think that's silly. Like, one day's good. If it was a little further out, great. It's Thanksgiving weekend. We didn't plan Thanksgiving. It's on the calendar. The date works with administration's time. Yeah, that, I'm, I don't want two advanced polling days for municipal election. It's crazy.
Counselor Hughes.
Um, I'm, I'm a little on the fence about that after hearing his argument as well. I'm really not sure. Could you give an estimation of what, you know, a four-hour evening window would cost? Would we go over budget if we were to do that?
I, I I believe we, administration would do their best to make it work. However, we are like minimal four to six people plus buying more election materials, so I don't have a definite cost. I believe we could do our best to keep it under budget, but I don't, I can't say clearly off the top.
So our election budget, I'll just wait here on money wise, our election budget is based on the previous years, like what it's cost plus inflation. In our two thousand twenty-one election, we had two separate advanced voting days as well as the election day.
Okay.
Because I remember there were two, I thought, and I just looked it up.
Just to remember, our last general election was during COVID time, and we had a referendum vote. We had more, yes. So just, we had, it was busier and there was more restrictions, so you couldn't have as many people in the booths at the same time. So now we can have more leeway of, you could only have so many people in the actual voting station. We don't have that anymore. So that was, also took up more time. So I believe that's also why we did that, but I'm still not opposed to adding in another day.
Did we have an evening day on the last one as well as a Saturday?
No, we didn't. We had October eighth, ten to four, and October ninth, ten to two. So I believe it was a Saturday. I think we did a Saturday, Sunday, if my math works out.
Oh, okay. Interesting.
Counselor Groundlock.
So, and that was, but that was just advanced.
There were two advanced days.
Because the nighttime one was at nighttime.
There's ten to eight on election day?
Yeah.
But there, that is the one.
And sorry to interrupt, just to note that we are actually in our bylaw, because we authorized it under our bylaw, we're opening an hour earlier on election day. We're actually starting at nine.
I, I would say like, I think the administration, especially the administration, they've had enough elections in the last year and a half, two years, like, two days, two days is enough, like, but if you guys all want an extra one rock and roll, but it's not going to make a huge difference, but I'm not going to die on that hill. Just, this works. It's fine. It's not the end of the world.
Anything further from council?
Anyone interested in making a motion as is? Counselor, or Counselor Hughes? I was just getting to it. I moved to authorize the town of Slave Lake administration to hold advanced voting date of October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and there is a motion on, that motion's on the floor. Any further discussion?
Sorry, that wasn't the actual motion. Pardon me. It was one of the options. Can I please read the proper one?
Thank you. I'd like that too.
I moved to schedule the two thousand twenty-five general election advance vote for October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five at the town of Slave Lake council chambers located at ten Main Street southwest Slave Lake, Alberta from ten, nine AM?
Ten.
Ten, okay.
The election day, we're open to hour.
Oh, got it. Pardon me. Ten AM to four PM.
Hey, there's further discussion. Counselor Adams.
So we're, you're just proposing one day. You're not wanting to have a second day. You're saying.
That's correct. I'm, I'm going with administration's recommendation here with one day.
Counselor Choba.
And so if, what would, would we still need to make a motion? Should we need to add another day?
Yes, and if you want to plan to do that, I would recommend maybe the Thursday before the long weekend. Because then you're in the timeline, you're not the Friday before.
The ninth.
Yeah, the ninth.
Our October ninth.
And I would do maybe if, if you want to do a whole day or a three to, like a three o'clock to a eight o'clock situation.
Okay, so we'll start with this one, so that we will be scheduling an advanced vote on that day, and if someone wants to make a motion for a further date, we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Huh? Yes, I'm getting there. Thank you. Any further discussion? Called a question, those in favor. Okay, that one is carried. Counselor Groundlock.
I will move to enter a joint election agreement with the High Prairie School Division for the two thousand twenty-five general election.
Any further discussion? Called a question, those in favor. And that is carried. Counselor Choba.
I move to enter into a joint election agreement with Living Waters School Division for the two thousand twenty-five general election.
Any further discussion? Called a question, those in favor, and that is carried. Counselor Choba.
I'd like to make a motion to schedule two thousand twenty-five general election advance voting for October, was it?
Ninth.
Two thousand twenty-five at the town of Slave Lake council chambers located at ten Main Street southwest Slave Lake, Alberta from three PM until.
I would do eight PM.
Eight PM.
Motion on the floor for an additional advanced voting date. Any further discussion? Counselor Groundlock.
Just, again, I just, I'm not going to beat this to death, but I, I just want to state, I think this is a waste of administration's time and money for the record, Your Honor.
Wonderful. Any further discussion from there? Counselor Choba.
And Counselor Groundlock, I understand historically there's been that, there hasn't been a need, but I think we need to look at doing things differently to see how we can get people to come out, and I think adding a time like this or modifying what we've done in the past to see how we can accommodate more people will be welcomed by our community, and I think this is one of those.
rebuttal.
My favorite thing of all of this is you're going to have two thousand people vote for you, you're going to make them all come on that day and make me look like an idiot.
Any other caller commentary from team? Yes, Counselor Choba.
Thank you for that. Just, just for the record, I have not declared an interest to run, so there's a high chance that I'm not going to be on that, and so I think for me is just to make sure that we have enough people turn out to pick who they want to lead them. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. And with that, any further discussion? Okay, I will call to question those in favor. All those posed, and that does not pass. Okay, so was that all the motions?
That's everything I need. Thank you so much.
We can move forward into question period. Does anyone have here questions for administration? If you do, Counselor Groundlock.
Sorry, maybe it's going to be here. Oh, no, it's not there. CAO, when will our legal be coming back? It, it's pretty overdue.
It's on the agenda for September second.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, then we can move into State of the Lake. Counselor Hughes.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the community that we're going to be having the Slave Lake Parade of Programs on September sixth at the MRC. So it's just an inform, information sharing kind of session for the community members. Lots of nonprofit groups, different programming that goes on in the community. It's just sharing of information and letting people know how they can stay involved. So I encourage people to come to the MRC on that day and check that out.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Okay, well, I will launch into a brief spiel here. So last week, our council met with Premier Smith, Minister Dreschen, and local, local leadership to, again, press the urgent need for work on Highway eighty-eight. We are pleased to confirm that weather permitting, shovels will be in the ground this week, hopefully tomorrow, on a three-kilometer stretch north of town. This is the first real progress we've seen in over a decade. It's a step forward and one that has been far too long in coming to fruition. This small section is a win for our community, but it cannot be mistaken for the solution. Highway eighty-eight has been in an unacceptable condition for years. Broken timelines, repeated promises, and endless delays have left this critical route unsafe for residents, industry, and emergency services. The province owes our community much more than another short-term fix. We were promised an open house by the Department of Transportation in May two thousand twenty-five, an opportunity for residents to finally get answers. That hasn't happened yet. Slave Lake has consistently supported this government, and frankly, it is frustrating to see our community treated as though our concerns can be put off indefinitely. Accountability must mean more than announcements. If this is the pace of progress we are expected to live with on Highway eighty-eight, then the promise must, province must also take a serious look at Highway two. We cannot continue to watch our two most vital transportation corridors deteriorate while timelines slip and excuses pile up. This three-kilometer project is not the finish line, it's the starting line. Our community has waited long enough, and we expect the government of Alberta to see this through. And a further, just to add to that further, there was some social media posts about a town hall being held last week regarding the, the Highway eighty-eight and other concerns of our region. It in fact wasn't a town hall, and it was a fundraiser for the Lesser Slave Lake Constituency Association. So I just wanted to clarify because there are residents that are concerned that, as the town of Slave Lake, that we didn't advertise a town hall. So again, it was a fundraiser that was not affiliated with the town of Slave Lake. We were lucky enough to get a last-minute meeting with them for fifteen minutes regarding the update on Highway eighty-eight. That's why I wanted to provide this to you here, that our goal is to continue advocating as a council, as a town, the MD, all of our community for Highway eighty-eight to be fixed. But again, no town hall, despite what some of the provincial representatives like to put forward, that was a fundraiser. So just wanted to clarify for everyone. Fantastic. And with that, we're moving into correspondence. Counselor Groundlock.
Like, before you read all this and declare this fancy day, like, I find it humorous that CN is going to declare Rail Safety Week when, like, the majority of the safety problems are from CN not fixing their problems or answering their phone. Just wanted to put that out there, so go ahead and read it, but yeah.
I believe we require a motion regarding declaring the Rail Safety Week. Counselor Adams.
I'll make a motion that we just declare the week of September fifteenth to twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and read the resolution in support of Rail Safety Week.
Okay, any further discussion? Called a question, those in favor, and that is carried. Pardon me, I'm sick, so you're going to have to listen to me read all of this. Hold on. Okay, whereas Rail Safety Week is to be held across Canada from September fifteenth to twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, whereas twenty, two hundred and sixty-one railway crossings and trespassing incidents occurred in Canada in two thousand twenty-four, resulting in sixty-eight avoidable fatalities and fifty-eight avoidable serious injuries. Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railway rights of way are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway railroad crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near roadways, railways, and obeying established traffic laws, will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas Operation Lifesaver is a public-private partnership whose aim is to work with the public, rail industry, governments, indigenous communities, police services, media, and and others to raise rail safety awareness. And whereas CN and Operation Lifesaver have requested our council adopt this resolution in support of its ongoing efforts to raise awareness, save lives, and prevent injuries in communities, including our municipality. This hereby resolved to support National Rail Safety Week to be held from September fifteenth to twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Counselor Adams.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Called a question, those in favor, and that is carried.